Good evening and on behalf of the League of Women Voters in the Rockwood School District, welcome to this. My name is Kathleen Carroll. I'm the co-president of the League and tomorrow morning at 5:00 I have to be at my post to be a special observer in the city of St. Louis. So this looks like a very tame exercise compared to what's going to happen in the city tomorrow. I want to thank two people from the district, Kathy Orta, who always calls first to arrange these candidate forms, and since we're doing 24 of them just in the month of March, and we did 11 of them in February for the city of St. Louis, I'm glad she got in her bid. And Emily Lutes over there who's helping with the sound system, this is a great sound system. I'm going to be your moderator for this evening and I want to start by thanking the candidates for showing up and participating. You can elect, I believe, three of them, is that correct? And they are in order up here as they appear on the ballot. So the first one is Lynn Midiot, second one is Mr. Randy Kirk-Miller, third one is Mr. Leonard Keith or Kinder, the fourth one is Ms. Tamara Romberg, and the fifth one is Mr. Siddhar Bhanbat. So these are the folks, I think, all very interesting ones. I've read their submissions to the Voters Guide and I think you have really good choices. So, the League believes that one of the best ways to learn about people is not to tweet, not to yell, okay, not to sue, but rather to hear candidates right in front of you answer your questions in a public forum. They're going to give their opening statements in the order they are in the ballot, and that means we're going to start with Ms. Midiot. And they're going to have two minutes for their opening statements, and then they're going to have one minute to answer each question. They're going to have the right to speak to all questions, so even if you were directing a question to a specific person, everybody is going to have the right to answer the question. And then everybody's going to have two minutes for a closing statement, and we'll start with the other end of the ballot, and that's Mr. Bhanbat. Now here's your job, and I see you're starting to do it. The questions we ask are not our questions, they're not the school district's questions, they're your questions. And so what that means is that we want you to write questions of general interest, they can be addressed to one candidate, but everybody will answer, or they can be for everybody else. Now, I've got some questions up here, but if you think of something else, just raise your hand, and one of our volunteers will be around to give you another card, and then raise your hand when it's written out, and they'll collect those. One question per card. Now, Kay Wincene right there is the timekeeper, she takes no prisoners. She is going to say, and if you saw the KSDK mayoral debate, I was the enforcer, that you could use golden coins, you heard on television, so when we tell you you have 30 seconds, that's to help you, when that stop sign goes up, I will cut you off. So, and then I'm going to retain the option to combine questions if they're similar, because we want to go through as many issues as we can. I want to make sure that every candidate has an equal opportunity to answer them. Anybody can audiotape this or videotape this, I know they're streaming it, so folks who are not here tonight can see it. And the League determines which questions will be asked, and we try in good faith to cover as many important issues as we can. So, without further ado, we're going to start with the opening statements, and Ms. Midiot, that's you.
Okay, well, thank you. And I appreciate being here, and I appreciate everyone in the audience being here as well. And I'm going to start off by saying something that you maybe have read and some of the things I have submitted, is that I truly believe in public education, and that I believe it is the responsibility of every citizen to be involved in their local school district. And the reason why I want to be on the board and continue on the board is that, given my career, 30 years more, in the field of public education, that I think I have something to offer the board and the district as a whole, but most importantly, I think I have something to offer the students in the Rockwood School District. I truly believe that all students have the potential to exceed, and I believe in the mission of the Rockwood School District. I've looked, you know, I've looked at it extensively, I've looked at the strategic plan, and the role of a school board is so critical to making sure that the students have what they need to be able to thrive in their school environment. And that takes stellar leadership, from what I say, from the boardroom to the classroom. If we want to continue to improve our district, and there's always room for improvement, then we need stellar leadership at the board level, and as well as all the way through the organization. I have, I have, but spent my life pretty much in the Rockwood School District. I have my two daughters graduate from Marquette High School, I have a grandchild that is at Currie's Middle Elementary, one will follow next year, and the second one will follow a few years after that, and I want to ensure that this district is as stellar in the future as it is today, and will continue to improve. And I truly think I have the skills to be able to be of value to the district.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Good evening, everybody. Thank you for coming. My wife and I have a son in 5th grade at Stanton. I'm currently a stay-at-home parent, it's been an amazing opportunity that I've been given. When we came to the district, we moved here strictly for the reputation and the opportunity the district offers. We were in a district that didn't offer that, and we felt that Rockwood gave us everything we needed. And it's, it's been amazing so far. I joined the PTO right away and got involved in the schools very actively. I spent the last two years as the president of the PTO, and it's been the most rewarding four years of my life, just giving back to the community and our schools, and to see what a difference that can make. I'm extremely passionate about the district, I want to see it succeed, it's been great as far as the track that we're on, I want to see it continue to thrive. We just need to keep moving forward, and I feel that I can keep on that track. My past experiences on the PTO, along with a career in technology, I feel would make me a great board member, so I hope to get the opportunity. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Kinder.
Yes. My family and I have lived in Baldwin for 30 years. My two children are Rockwood graduates. I served in the military for two years, 1969 to '71, including a tour of duty in Vietnam. I'm currently an assistant professor at Maryville University, St. Louis. I was principal at Eureka High School from 1996 to 2003. Before that, I was an associate principal at Marquette High School in Rockwood School District, and helped open Marquette. I was an assistant and associate principal at Marquette High School for seven years. Have a doctorate degree in education from St. Louis University, masters in secondary administration from University of Missouri at St. Louis, masters in mathematics from Central Missouri State. Have a BS in secondary education with a mathematics degree from Southeast Missouri State University. I would be remiss if I did not mention that Sue and I have been married for over 48 years. Get that on tape, please. I am an incumbent board member and have a, had been a director since 2011, two, three year terms. Rockwood has been the lighthouse district that other districts in Missouri and the nation want to be like. My desire is to help Rockwood continue providing the best possible education so our students can reach their educational potential. I am seeking one of the three-year terms, 2017 to 2020. Thank you very much to the League of Women Voters for hosting this tonight.
Ms. Romberg.
Do I get his extra time? No.
Did I have any extra time? What else extra time do I have, Kay? I must have read it too fast. I'll take care of that on the end.
Thank you, League of Women Voters, for having us here, and all of you for giving up your time this evening to be here as concerned citizens. My name is Tamara Romberg, and I am running for one of the seats of the Rockwood School Board. I have over 50 years in education. During that time, I have been a, I've literally taught everything from 3- and 4-year-olds. I'm currently an adjunct instructor at both Maryville University and West Bay University, and grade reading courses. During that time, I've been a teacher, I have been a reading specialist for 10 years here in Rockwood at Kellison Elementary. I was the language arts coordinator for the reading intervention program, which we started and proved to be very effective here. I was Title I Director, and as well as the Oasis Coordinator for here in the district. When I retired from that job, I went, I went to work for Zander Blazer Publishing, National Publishing Company, as a national consultant, and I had the opportunity to travel across the state, across the country actually, into lots of different school districts. So I have a vast experience in what different school districts look like, can look like, and should look like. I can bring that experience with me to the Rockwood School Board. My priorities in the district are to promote the district, because I believe in the mission that all children can learn. It's been my career for 50 years to ensure that all children can reach their fullest potential. I believe in that. I believe in the leadership that we currently have in the Rockwood School District, that with this leadership, we can go from being the number four, as it was ranked in the 2017 state school Missouri survey, we can be number one. And as a school board member, I would see that that would be my role, to support our leadership that we currently have, to see that we can move into the number one premier position.
Okay, finally, Mr. Bhanbat.
My name is Suthir Bhanbat. For me, this is totally different. I'm coming from the industry, 35 years of experience in the industry. I have a PhD in chemical engineering, master in design administration, and a degree in the polymer science, too. I have 30-plus patents. I, when I moved from Philadelphia area here, I've always been having focus in my children's education. I chose Rockwood over other school districts, and I was extremely happy the way the Rockwood School District operates. My, during that time, I started also a school, which is Center for Indian Cultural Education. Last 25 years, I've been running that, it has grown from 100 to 450 kids, age 5 to 16, I have 70 teachers and 30 administrators and staff, and we see a lot of positive results. A lot of kids have perfect ACT, SAT, and all the 70 teachers who work for me, they all are very focused on the activities, what we recommend to them to do. I strongly believe in children's education, and I was talking to one of the candidates here, as to, after, up to age 5, you know, the children are groomed at home, but after 5 to age 15, it's the environment, it's the school system and everywhere else. I focus on my kids' education, I was a president of Parents Association in 1995, '96, with a string instrument under Karen Brown. And my son is, was that time, is the world's youngest composer laureate, and today my son is a trauma surgeon, and my daughter is a clinical psychologist in Chicago. Thank you.
Okay. We're going to open our questions, and the first question is going to be for you, Mr. Miller. And here's the question. What is the biggest challenge facing our school district, and what would you do about it?
Well, right now, I think the biggest problem is going to be keeping our class sizes down with the amount of houses that you've got going in Eureka, and then you go off Wild Horse, and it's kind of the same thing. To get those class sizes to stay where they're at, that's going to be a big hurdle to overcome. If Prop T, God forbid, doesn't pass, that's, it's going to be hard, it's going to be really hard. We may end up looking at redistricting, which would not be a fun word, I know Dr. Knost is, but, no, hopefully Prop T passes, and that will allow us to add the school we need, add on to some of the schools we need, and continue building on to Eureka as well, so...
Okay. Mr. Kinder.
Well, I agree with Randy, that the biggest issue right now before us is the passing of Proposition T, a $95 million bond issue, of which $22 million is for a new elementary school out by Six Flags, where they're building between 500 and 700 homes. And we just can't handle it in the Eureka area. Gaggy is already overflowing, so part of that money goes to add a big wing on Gaggy. Eureka High School is going to grow by 350 students the next four or five years, so it adds a two-floor wing on the north side of Eureka. But there's other things in there, there are infrastructures that we need to finish. Some involve keeping up with the 21st century and the STEM initiative, and adding on to the other three high schools, and some technology issue and maintenance issues. Those are big financial situations. We also need to keep balancing the budget, even though the state keeps sort of not being able to give us the same money from year to year. They talk like they didn't cut education, but they did $30, $30 million in terms of bus transportation. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Romberg.
I would agree with Keith and Randy both, in that class size and Proposition T is a major issue in our district right now, not just for Eureka. And I think that that's important, and the new elementary, and especially the early childhood center that is so needed here in the Eureka area, but also because one of the things in Rockwood that is so impressive, this building, for example, was built, what, in the 1930s? And the state-of-the-art that you mentioned that we have here is because Rockwood invests in all of its facilities. And so the bond issue will also, as you said, Keith, will maintain those facilities so that they, all children across our whole district can benefit from that, that we have the STEM opportunities, that we have the technology in the infrastructure in our district. So Prop T will give us those things for our district, for every student.
Okay, Mr. Bhanbat.
Being new in the school district board of education area, I would probably, I'm not too much familiar with all the issues what school district is going through there, but my goal will be to foster balance between budgetary limitations and the need to continue on high educational standards. I'll be also continue the support, support of the educators, exped, evidence-based practices using innovative and latest technologies, and to promote diversity in the dynamic social environment in our community.
Okay, Ms. Midiot.
Well, of course, they, they did a great job of saying everything. Of course, the growth within the district is a, is a concern, and hopefully with Proposition T, that we'll have a, we have a plan for that, and that plan will be able to be actualized. And because of preparing, we need those spaces as well for preparing kids with the 21st century technology STEM. But I would add something to that as well. I, it's, it's about having the most qualified people within those, within those learning spaces and in those buildings, and to be able to, what I say, recruit and retain top talent at all levels, from, from our administrators, to our teachers, to our bus drivers, to our cafeteria, workers that can reach, reach out to kids, and make sure those kids feel engaged, and provide a safe and welcoming learning environment for the kids. So the infrastructure is so important, and having the right buildings and the right population in each building, but...
Your time is up. Okay, Mr. Kinder, we're going to start with you this time, and here is the question. Some of the greatest leaders have talked about their efficiency, or their belief in purpose, but this person wants to know, what specific actions would you point to that show your passion for education in this district? Be specific.
My, my personal passion, is that right?
Yep. So an action that demonstrates it.
Well, like Tammy, I've been in education for 50 years also, 52 actually. And I started out as a high school teacher, then I became an administrator in, in five different school dis, five different schools, including three in Rockwood. I've always operated under the, under the mantra that I want everybody to learn to their utmost potential. Students, high school students make mistakes, folks. They make mistakes at home when they're with you as a parent. They make mistakes, but we want them to learn from their mistakes. We're not in necessarily a punishing mode, we want them to learn, and ultimately to get to the point where they can graduate. Nothing is more exciting than going to graduations. And I've been to a lot of graduations, I think I figured it out, over 12,000 of my students have graduated while I've been the principal or assistant principal or teacher. That is the ultimate goal, is to get these students to that point where they can graduate. I still have time?
Yep.
Well, I...
You spoke too soon. Ms. Romberg, and you can't have any of his time.
I wouldn't have you laugh.
No, don't start again, okay. As I, I, and when I was in Rockwood, for 23 years, as a reading specialist at Kellison Elementary, I devoted my time to that school, because those were my students, I still consider it my home school in the district. When I became a coordinator, I learned what 24/7 meant, because that's the kind of job that you do when you're in Rockwood. I had some wonderful administrators that I worked under, but we were committed to seeing that whatever needed to be done was done, and it wasn't done until it was done correctly. And so I bring that passion to everything I do, you know, other leadership roles that I'm in, I am committed to doing it and seeing that whatever it is we do, we're doing it for the right reasons, at the right time, and the right way.
Okay, Mr. Bhanbat.
My focus will be children's education, because I believe that any child could be the best one in their life if they are properly groomed, and I think the school environment is a very important part, environment for children's future. If we are focused on children's education, anything we do, the end result should be schools, children's education. And pulling out their strengths and weaknesses, and focus on strength to be the best one, I think they could be, and that's my goal.
Okay, Ms. Midiot.
So, I too have over 30 years of experience in education, as I said in my introduction, and my last position was as assistant superintendent for special school district. So I spent the majority of my career working with kids with special needs, and also in the gifted area. And my passion, and I, in that role, I had opportunity to work with the Rockwood School District. And my passion at this point in time here is to actualize the phrase "all means all." There are all kids who reach their full potential, and that all the educators are engaged in that endeavor, and that we find every student spark, and we develop unique learning opportunities for kids, so they can be prepared for post-secondary training, or whatever they want to go into. So I am extremely passionate about the phrase "all means all," and that we need to put things in place, opportunities in place for all kids to find their, their spark, and to be able to be successful.
Okay. Mr. Miller.
I would say my passion with, lies in the technology industry, you know, STEM is a huge part of what the future is going to hold, and we need to get our kids more engaged in it. The classroom itself has changed quite a bit. Kids, they don't just read books, they, they need to touch it, they need to feel it, and that's where we need to get that technology in their hands, trying to get that one-to-one ratio with technology. Every kid has their own tablet. Getting more STEM labs, that's where the focus, for me, anyway, I think should be, you know, most of these kids, 50, over 50% of them, they're going to go into jobs that aren't even created yet, because technology is changing so rapidly. So we need to stay on the cutting edge of that with our kids, and give them every opportunity when they graduate to have fulfilling lives.
Okay. Ms. Romberg, we're going to start with you this time, and we're going to move out a little bit, because we have to make decisions and take positions, not just on our own district, but as part of the education community, what's going on in the state as well. So right now, we have a very controversial set of bills about charter schools moving through the legislature, pretty fast, actually. Two people want to know, what about House Bill 6334, or it could be Senate Bill 32, they're companion bills, where we would have charter schools allowed in 70% of the state? What is your position on this issue, and why do you hold it?
In the research that I've done looking at charter schools and school vouchers in general, first of all, there's been absolutely no research to show that, that they're effective, and that what they do tend to do is cause, set up several things. One, some competition, which is drawing students away from the public schools. Two, it is diversifying the funds, so that there aren't enough funds for either the public school or the private schools, because that money that is spent, that is divided between all eligible students, isn't enough for private school students to attend the school of their choice, and only it seems to lower those standards for them. Plus, we've seen then the charter schools, that they have not met the same standards that the public schools have been held to. So I would have to say that in my research, I am against the voucher systems.
Okay, Mr. Bhanbat.
I believe there's utility for school choice program in our community, but it should not be at the cost of our school, you know, districts, you know, resources, to benefit from the infrastructure to the other communities. It should not be an expensive compromise of resource available for the community's own constituents. My personal experience, based on what I've seen with my kids, after sudden school standards, doesn't make that much difference, so to me, it's, you know, public schools are more favored than, than the charter schools.
Okay. Ms. Midiot.
Well, I agree with Tamara that, that charter schools in the St. Louis area and Kansas City areas, they have about a 49% failure rate, and they have actually closed, and the other, the ones that are still operating would, over half of those would not meet accountability standards held, that public schools are held to. So without successful results and data, I wonder why we would want to expand that system to, and to draw money away from public education. So I would oppose charter schools unless there is a higher level of accountability and oversight than there is now. I also agree with Tamara in reference to the vouchers. To be able to give a student enough money to go to have their choice of any private schools would be financially very difficult for the public school system to, to absorb. So a lot more needs to go into any type of school choice system before I would find it something that I would support.
Okay, your time is up. Mr. Kinder, or excuse me, Mr. Miller.
I, I too oppose this bill. I don't think that it's good for our public schools at all. You know, last year, I believe they took hundreds of billions of dollars, the charter schools did, from the public school system, and that doesn't benefit anybody. The data shows that most of these charter schools, these kids are actually reverting backwards. They're, they're, let's, for example, you've got a 5th grader, well, now he's maybe at 3rd grade or 4th grade level, and they're just not where the rest of our schools are, because of, you know, they don't have to answer to the people that we do, so it's, it really is a lot, it's just not good for us, it's not good for the community. I think it offers an opportunity for some bad business, if you will, because I feel that there's some people who have taken some money and done bad things with these kids because they run these schools into the ground. I, I oppose it.
Okay, Mr. Kinder.
There was a great article in the Post Dispatch last week that illustrated the problems with charter schools, and I don't know if you read it or not, but not only are they failing as compared to the public schools, but the possibility of misappropriations of funds was definitely illustrated in the article last week. That's what I'm afraid of in the charter schools. Public schools, I mean, there's so many guidelines, it's very rare that anything can happen with, with the money, other than what it's portioned for. In the charter school, that's not true. Charter schools, right now, in the, not in Missouri, charter schools only allowed in Kansas City and St. Louis. With the bills that are coming across, would allow any area or any district in the state of Missouri to have charter schools. I don't think they thought that out, because a lot of the rural areas, they struggle enough, and you put a charter school in there, it could devastate a rural school. Probably in Rockwood, it would not have any effect initially. Now, someone may start a charter school, and that won't hurt them initially, but it may later.
Okay. Didn't know which one of us had the last word there. We're going to start with Mr. Bhanbat this time, and there are two questions that are very specifically directed to you. So I'm going to ask them and ask you to answer it, but I also want to widen that question for the rest of the candidates to deal with. Two people have asked about the school that they say they understand that you have created. One of them says, "If Rockwood is so good, how come you created your own school?" Another question was, "Do you see this as a conflict of interest?" So, to widen this, I'd like everybody else to address, what are the special circumstances where you can see a place for a special school? So, let's start with you, Mr. Bhanbat.
The school is called Center for Indian Cultural Education. It's focused on cultural values, and it has yoga, meditation, Indian culture, and a lot of other things, and it's a Sunday school. It's not every day, so it's a Sunday school, kids age 5 to 15 with different ethnic backgrounds, they come, they want to learn Indian culture, and most of them are Indian, and some are, you know, when Asian countries people, they come and do it. So there is no conflict, because it's not offered anywhere else, what the school does, and as I say, it's held on Sundays at Little Middle School.
Okay. So you can understand how to widen a question, that was very helpful, Mr. Bhanbat, to me at least. And so the rest of the candidates, think about how those kinds of programs can work together for students with a... together for students, um, with a regular public school district. So, Ms. Medya?
Okay, repeat the question again.
Okay, so now that Mr. Bramba has clarified that this is in essence a Sunday school-like school for culture, um, how do, do special educational programs like that work together with public school?
Well, I'm, I, I believe that as a school district, that we have to be good partners with our private parochial school colleagues and that, and I know in the Rockwood School District, we do that, we reach out to them for, invite, uh, private school, uh, parochial, private parochial school teachers to come in for training and for, uh, resources as well as, uh, sharing, sharing strategies. So, I, I think there is a place in our community to, to come together and learn and staff learn together and to be able to, uh, to share expertise and resources, uh, in that regard, uh, not monetary resources, but expertise resources. So, we are, you know, we're our community and we need all work together. So, I think it's, I think we should be good partners and good stewards with our private parochial, uh, colleagues, uh, but the funding obviously would not be, would not be allocated.
Mr. Miller.
Well, I agree with Lynn. Uh, so long as the district isn't losing any funds, um, over any private schools that are in the area, um, I, I don't see it really as a conflict of interest. It sounds to me, correct me if I'm wrong, it sounds to me like this is more of, of an outlet for children to go to and, uh, experience a certain culture, if, if you will. Um, and I don't think that that's, to me, that sounds like Rockwood just being a good neighbor and, and just allowing a place where some of our students can, can go to experience things they might not get to experience in the public school. Um, with some of the classes that we have, they may not have that opportunity. But again, it's just, it's gotta remain that, just a private school and, and not allow any funds to be taken from our, our district.
Mr. Kinder.
I believe in separation of church and state, even though it doesn't mention that in the constitution, which is unique. We've always believed that public school money should not go to private schools, religious schools, et cetera. I still believe in that. But I also believe that if someone wants to send their son or daughter to a private school where there'd be a, uh, an Indian school, a Catholic school, Lutheran school, or whatever, that is their prerogative, but they pay for it out of their own pocket. They're paying to the public school, is my belief. And when you start talking about all these other things that can come about in terms of taking public money for private schools with the vouchers, with the, uh, the savings account and all those, that is draining from the public school. I lived in, in the eighties, when the city students were allowed to come to the county, that just drained two of your most important resources, the brains of the, of the city students and the leaders of the city students. They're still trying to recover from some of them.
Okay, Ms. Romberg.
I think when we think about the opportunities, one, within Rockwood, we already have alternative schools in our high schools for some of our students that have special needs so that they can finish their education. We have a renowned gifted center for students who are gifted so that we can further and benefit them. There may be an opportunity, we might think into the future as far as magnet schools in terms of spec- of fine arts because those students deserve to have specialized education and it could be a branch of Rockwood that goes into the fine arts so that we could offer that for our students. So, that's one way that we might be able to do that. Several years ago, we ran a satellite summer school in the city of Saint Louis. It was Rockwood sponsored, but we partnered in the city of Saint Louis, very successful for our students. So, there are ways that we can look, think out of the box to partner that we can extend the education of our students.
Okay, um, this time, we're going to start with Ms. Medya and the question is, how would you specifically address the racial disparities in the out-of-school suspensions in Rockwood School District? Two people have asked this question.
Well, interestingly enough, in my role as, uh, Assistant Superintendent for Special Schools, annually, I had to look at disproportionality of suspensions, uh, with, both in reference to race and disability areas. So, I've looked at lots of data. So, I, I understand the, the, the need there and understand that we must, as a district, continue to provide opportunities for all kids to, to succeed. Uh, Rockwood has done a good job of layering in lots of supports in, in their, in their districts and to keep, to keep students engaged. If students are engaged, if they're learning, then, then behavior follows and students will not be suspended. So, I think it's up to we, it's up to the district to ensure that there are programs, uh, schools of character, leader in me, uh, the multi-care systems of support, uh, student study teams are all in place, but need, probably need to continue.
Your time is up.
Build.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Well, I agree with, with Lynn, with a lot of what she said. Uh, I think a lot of this starts with our, you know, you start young with these grade schools, like she said, the leader in me, the character stuff. We, at Stanton, where my son is, is a student, uh, we do the leader in me and, and it's huge to see what that builds with the kids as far as, um, you know, how they interact with, with children and adults. And I, and I think that that, you start there and I think that that just continues on it with the children as they get older, you know, you teach them young and they just, they, they start to know what right and wrong is and I, I think suspending a kid isn't going to solve anything. It's, it's basically going to, to put them probably where the problem started, which is, you know, some bad environment that they, they've been put in. So, I think we need to try and keep our kids in school as much as possible.
Mr. Kinder.
Yes, there is a racial disparity in, in, in suspensions in Rockwood, but it's also that way in every other district in the whole U- United States. There's a racial disparity. I think part of the problem, and we can talk about all the different aspects, whether it's poverty, whether it's race or whatever, it's none of those. It's a combination, but it's also a combination of all of those. What happens is, we as teachers, and I'm talking about myself and everybody else, sometimes we don't understand the burdens that students bring to school, especially sometimes students of color or even of minorities. They bring to school things that have happened at home and the least thing from their mind is learning in school. It's, oh, how did I even get here today? Did I have any food, et cetera, and so forth? We have to learn how to bridge that gap and be able to talk to these students. We as teachers have to have empathy. Now, it's not only one-sided, the students need to understand there are certain rules to abide by and so it's a combination of both those. When we can get that together, we will be successful.
Okay, Ms. Romberg.
I happened to see the killer Mockingbird this past weekend and Atticus, Atticus Finch has a, a statement, he says that we can't really un- have empathy or understand anyone until we have lived in their skin. And I, so I agree with Keith on that and that we need to understand as teachers, um, where our students are coming from. With this racial disparity in suspensions, first of all, there's no suspension that's effective for students because that is not going to solve their problems and their needs. We have to have clear, precise articulation of what the expectations are in our schools and then we need to have ongoing modeling and self-monitoring as we have in all of our elementary schools and high schools with their character education programs. And we need to offer alternatives for suspension. We need students that are self-reflective of what else could I have done? What else, how else could I have solved my problems? And we need to support that then with, um, positive rewards and, and encouragement and direction from the educators that they're around. And then, once, there are times suspension is truly warranted because we can, all, we have to provide a safe environment for all of our students.
Your time is up. Mr. Bramba.
I want to just clarify one point, that, uh, the school which I run is not a religious school. It is cultural school. We have Christians, Hindus, Muslims, they're in our school. So, that's, I want to just clarify that. And to me, the diversity is extremely critical. Uh, our school, what I run, we work very close with Saint Louis Science Center, the CEO works very closely with me and, um, children from the, uh, city and all these, we all work together. Uh, what that does is our children get a significant exposure. We also have a poverty simulation program.
Mr. Bramba, the question, and I appreciate that, extra information, but could you say at least one sentence about the question, which is about the racial disparities in school suspensions?
It exists, but we had to, um, find a way to minimize that. The only way it's gonna be done is through diversity aspect.
Okay, thank you very much. Uh, we're gonna start this time with Mr. Miller. Uh, two people are concerned about teachers having enough extra time to spend with struggling students and how could the board help already busy teachers have time to do that?
Well, I think that's gonna start with, uh, your class sizes. I mean, if you can minimize your class sizes and keep those down, that will allow teachers to have the time with different groups. I volunteer in classrooms a lot and I see this. Usually, if the class sizes are small enough, they can break out into, you know, maybe five or six kids. You've got kids that are maybe a little more advanced and, and they can start them. And then, you've got your, kind of your middle and your, your struggling kids. And it's real easy to break those out when you've got a small class size, but when that advances, that makes it really difficult for the teachers to, to work with that. So, I would say that's, that's your, that's probably your, your best answer for that. Just keep your classes down.
Okay, Mr. Kinder.
I agree with Randy in keeping the class sizes down, but I have been concerned for years about the burdens we continue to put on teachers without taking anything off of their plate, for years. And it is, it's not only administrators doing it, it's federal regulations, everybody and parents, parents demands wanting more and more quick information from the teachers. It would be nice if we just had teacher go in and teach, that'd be fine, but it doesn't work that way. So, we have to, as we're adding these burdens to teachers, we need to take something off of their plate so that they have time to do those additional burdens. It would be so nice if a teacher could just go home and plan their lesson for the next day or grade the papers that they have without having to worry about all the other things that come out of this. So, I think we, as a district, we have to work on trying to take things, lessen the load for the teachers so they can actually get in there and teach to that. Plus, the lower class sizes will also help.
Okay, Ms. Romberg.
Definitely, uh, class size has an impact, uh, because it does afford the teacher opportunity to, um, physically come in contact with their students on a regular basis. But there are also things that we can do as a district in terms of supporting professional development for our teachers, how to work smarter, how to combine strategies, how to combine to, uh, standards so that they're covering, not, not just, um, covering, but going in depth with more standards, more strategies. We can do that as a, as a district by providing professional development and support for our teachers. We've had differentiation in our district for a number of years and yet, many of the teachers still, we have changeover and new teachers, don't know how to differentiate and how to manage those classrooms. We have excellent teachers, they just need to have the opportunity and the support to do it.
Mr. Bramba.
I think, uh, I, I saw last, we, last time video at Marquette, I think there's a way to, um, uh, figure out the strength and weaknesses of the children and children with a similar strength, then we could focus on them as the smaller classrooms and they can excel further. But if we have everybody together from less strength to high strength, teachers would have a real problem in trying to, um, you know, um, bring everybody to the same level. So, I believe that, you know, small classrooms and also extracting the strength from the children as to what they're good at and what they're not good at and then, uh, finding a way to, um, uh, go further in that strength and weaknesses area.
Okay, Ms. Medya.
Well, I too agree with class size and when I have been out in the schools and, and the classrooms, especially at the elementary level, I am amazed how efficiency, efficiently those classes run, how those teachers have kids in groups doing this and doing that and, and, and the students are so engaged. And I walk out saying, wow, you know, that, that's really a hard job and those teachers are giving it their all. It's, it is truly amazing. Um, so, I, I think that we can be more efficient as educators and as a board. I think it's our job always to look at, look for those efficiencies. We also need to be looking at what support staff we can place in, in the district. I know that we have, uh, a pretty generous allotment of social workers and I, uh, hear all the time how much the teachers appreciate that, counselors, nurses in our buildings. So, there are some things that the board can always be looking at to see, if, keeping within fiscal responsibilities to see how we can support teachers' work in those classrooms. It is, it is about that daily interaction of that teacher with that student that is so crucial.
Okay, Mr. Kinder, we're gonna start with you for this question. Two people are concerned and point out that not every high school graduate in the Rockwood District is gonna go to graduate school and get a PhD and they're concerned about how we're preparing our high schoolers for jobs. One of them says employers say they can't find skilled workers and that the jobs that are out there require certain skills. What should the district do about that?
Well, first, employers can find skilled workers coming out of schools. They may not have the exact everything that they wanted, but they have a majority of the things. Rockwood has already been working on initiatives to help train students for the twenty-first century and that's not training them to go to college necessarily, but it's training them to do some trade, in, trade and industry things. Uh, we could talk about the new computer situation where, uh, students in the school will be taking apart and putting back together computers that break from our students from the one-on-one initiative and they're getting licensed so they can be able to go write and work in those fields. We do offer a lot of different things and some students need to go in the military. And when I say need to go in the military, I didn't mean need, they want to go in the military and that would help them. So, we have a lot of different opportunities for the students besides just college and we have to keep working towards that and Dr. Conost is committed to that, to continue building these chances and these, these experiences for students to be able to go into the workforce and that don't wanna go to college.
Your time is up. Ms. Romberg.
I believe that when we look at, um, our students, we look through the lens of curriculum and that gives us the three Cs and that is, we want to prepare our students to be able to communicate in the workforce. Having been in the workforce, that is a major issue so that they can communicate their job, they can communicate across, um, disciplines. The other is that they're collaborative, that they know how to talk with each other, that they can share and share ideas, work cooperatively on projects. And the other is that they have critical thinking skills because our students, as Randy had mentioned earlier, we don't know what jobs they'll have, but we do know that we want them to be prepared and so if they can communicate, collaborate and think critically, they will be successful.
Mr. Bramba.
Our curriculum and education should match with, uh, practical or industry needs. Kids could be trained, uh, from a younger age and, uh, once we extract their strength, we can find out where they can go and, and, uh, future is gonna be very competitive and the kids have to learn as to what industry needs are and we have to match industry need versus our educational standards.
Okay, Ms. Medya.
And my colleagues make great points here. I'm gonna add something and I agree with everything that they've said, but I'm gonna add something in addition, that I think we need to be listening to our community, to our, to our businesses. We need to set up some structures in which we get that feedback and, and always be asking, what do you need, what do you want our, what do you want the graduates to look like, either coming out of high school or, or even kids who would go into other types of technical training? So, I think we need to set up a, a process of listening to future employers so we can prepare the students. Uh, I was with the Labor Club last week and they were talking the same thing, that, you know, kids aren't, kids don't have the skills to come out and be plumbers and, and electricians and, and how do we prepare? We also need to wo- be working with our colleagues at Special Schools District and the North County, South County Tech to be able to make sure that they're meeting the district's needs because they're there. We have pro- we have internships that we're, that we're expanding, uh, we have entrepreneurial programs, so we need to just be thinking outside of the box to, to, again, to meet each student's individual requirements.
Mr. Miller.
Well, again, I'm gonna go back to the STEM programs, uh, just keeping that, that momentum on building with our STEM programs, I think that that's, again, that, that's huge. It's, that's where a lot of these jobs are gonna go. Um, so, if we can just keep building on that and, and keep adding more classes that students can engage in, um, getting them started earlier, you know, with the grade school, we're talking about the Prop T, uh, getting STEM labs in the grade schools, I mean, that's huge. Studies have shown that kids in grade school will determine what their careers are gonna be that early on. So, um, I think it, it's really great to give them an opportunity that early on to do that. Um, and to touch on what Lynn said, uh, I went to the labor meeting as well and it, I, I have family members also who are in the construction trades and it is so hard right now to find people, young people who wanna build a career and it, it can be a great career in the trades, you know, plumbers, electricians, carpenters. And, and yes, they can make a lot of money and, and be very successful and it's a great living and I, I don't know that we push it on.
Your time is up. Okay, um, Ms. Your time is up. Okay. Ms. Romberg, we're going to start with you this time. And we're going to switch now to how the board runs, and a couple of questions about that. Here's the first question. In your opinion, what should be the board's number one priority?
Oh, that's easy. I can say that in one sentence. Hire Dr. Eric Canost. Actually, the board's, the board's role is to put a superintendent into place that can fulfill the mission of the district. And if that's done, the board then can sit back and do their job, and that is just to do policy for the district. We don't, the board should not micromanage what happens in the district. That's up to Dr. Canost and his staff. You put good people into place, and then you can do your job well. I don't need to say anything more.
Mr. Brombath.
I think that the board's responsibility is to foster a balance between budgetary limitations and the need to continue the high education standards. And also, continue board support of educators' evidence-based practices using innovative and latest technologies. And also promote diversity in the dynamic and climate of the community.
Ms. Midyett.
Board's role is really just set direction for the district, and they do this through the hiring and evaluation of the superintendent, through the approval of the budget process, through the strategic planning process, and through policies, and, as well as communicate with the community. So, as Tamara said, it's not the board's role to, what I refer to is get down in the weeds. We have, we hire people to do that. We entrust our superintendent will develop a great leadership team, and that leadership team will then hire great people throughout the system. So, it is really about setting direction for the district. And that does start with, with, with the hiring of the superintendents, but also the development of the strategic plan, and how that works with the budget.
Okay, Mr. Miller.
Well, I'm going to keep my answer short and sweet. It's real simple for me. It's what is in the best interest of all of our students. That's, that's why we're here. We're not here for anything else but to educate and to produce positive role models in our society as they graduate. If it doesn't make sense for our kids, then it's not a good thing. So, for me, that's going to be my focus is, as a board, I think, is what is in the best interest of our students. Bottom line.
Okay, Mr. Kinder.
Well, everybody's answered the questions, but I'm going to reiterate part of it. The main part is to hire the superintendent to run the district, let the superintendent run the district, and it is to help, you know, give guidance if needed on the balancing of the budget, the policies. But I think also, and I'm going to talk about individual board members, and I can, because on the people sitting up here tonight, I am so impressed. Everyone, it's why you get somebody wants to get on the board, because they have a personal agenda. We don't want that on our board. We don't want that in Rockwood. The only agenda is exactly what Randy said. We want the students to learn to their best potential, and we want to be able to provide that education for them. If we think anything else, we shouldn't be on the board. So, I'm confident in all five of us that we all have the same ideas. I have some time left, don't I? Congratulations, all five of you.
Okay, Mr. Brombath, we're going to start with you. Beyond addressing the day-to-day issues, a key function of the board is to provide strategic oversight. What specific skills do you have to be able to do this, strategic oversight over the school district?
My administrative educational management skills, which I have developed over 35 years, both in the industry and the cultural school, I think they'll be very important to think out of the box. If I see here our candidates, most of them have significant experience in the educational system. I'm coming from out of the box. So, I'll be looking at much more practical way, and finding ways to make sure that we meet the school district's vision and mission.
Ms. Midyett.
Well, again, back to my role as Special School District Assistant Superintendent, my responsibilities were to ensure that the special education services were delivered throughout St. Louis County, through all 22 districts within the St. Louis area. It was a large, large task. And part of that was, and part of that was really, again, developing that strategic plan. I have been fortunate, fortunate enough to work with a number of nationally-known experts in the area of strategic planning, quality, through quality improvement. I myself am a Baldrich, a quality examiner, or was a quality examiner. So, so, I think I could really can bring that piece to the, to the board, to be able to ensure that our, our plan for success, our plan for what Randy wants to happen, is, is well crafted, and there's a lot of accountability there from my, my previous positions.
Okay. Mr. Miller.
Well, I think right now, you know, the plan that Tim and his, his crew have put together, I mean, I think if we can use that and just be good stewards of that money, and really focus on, on not steering away from that. I mean, I really like what they've put together, and I really feel good about the plan that's already in place. This is going to mean, when we bid out these, these new rooms, these new classrooms, these new schools, we've, we've really got to be very diligent on looking at these bids, making sure that they're in the best interest of the community and the schools. And again, it just, bottom line, is, is it good for the kids? That's, that's where I'm going to focus on. Does it make the most sense for our district with the kids?
Mr. Kinder.
Would you restate the question? I seem to have lost it.
Okay. The question is about, part of, the most important role of the board is to provide strategic oversight. So, what specific skills do you have to do that?
I wrote it in one of the notes for one of the magazines, that I think, from my background in education, that's a strategic advantage. I've been in the schools. I know what the schools are like. But also, through my teaching position at Maryville, in the last 11 years, we deal, we work with school issues. I have taught the law class at Maryville. I've taught the finance class. I've taught how to be a group leader. I've taught how to process effectively and get along with other people. And I think those are important. Those are strategic things that individuals with, within the board, or on the board, can bring, that will help foster the strategic plans and strategic things that we're thinking about. So, I think that's something, I was looking at it from that standpoint. Thanks for rephrasing the question. I think I'm done.
Okay, Ms. Romberg.
And during my 50 years, I have had leadership opportunities. I'm currently the State Reading Association President, and have been for a number of years. I've also been active in the district, and been through strategic planning with the Board of Education. So, I have that experience of knowing how to do strategic planning, how to make it effective in terms of what is best for our students. I also have a win-win philosophy. There are no obstacles. There are only opportunities to make things better. We can make things better for our students if we work together and we're collaborative. If we think out of the box, but we think in the box, what is it that needs to be done, do it. Again, my favorite phrase is the right thing for the right reasons.
Okay. I've got two questions that I want to ask, and I'm going to call this a quick round robin. So, these are going to be 30-second answers, okay, rather than one-minute questions. And, and then, before I do that, I want to give you a couple of things to think about for your closing statements, because some questions that have come from the audience really belong answered in closing statements. So, you can think about these. One of them is, what's your vision for an environment in this school district for everybody to thrive? One of them is, everybody has a plethora of experience. What sets you apart and makes you a superior candidate? So, I want you to think about those things as you write your, or think about your final statement. But I've got two quick questions that I want you to answer in 30 seconds. And we're going to start with you, Ms. Midyett. Here's the first one. And I'm sorry that this young man left, because I wanted to answer him to hear his question answered, but I'm going to make sure that he gets this. And that is, if you, what are you going to do about overcrowding besides just expand classrooms? 30 seconds. And let's start with you, Ms. Midyett. What are you going to do to, to deal with overcrowding besides just building more classrooms?
That's a good question. I think overcrowding needs to be addressed by having a really qualified staff, a well-trained staff, that can work with creating schedules and movement of students within, within a building. Maybe even thinking outside of the box, what are the learning environments that could, could be put in place where students could go. There are some school districts where the kids spend more time outside of a classroom than inside the classroom, because they're living in the community.
Okay. Your time is up, but see how much you can say in 30 seconds. All right. How about you, Mr. Miller, 30 seconds. What else can you do besides simply build more classrooms?
Well, I think at that point, you just need to get creative with your administrators in the buildings. You know, I know some of the schools are using cafeterias, gyms, as multipurpose areas. So, I mean, if it comes to that, I know, I know it's not ideal, but it can certainly be utilized. That will solve the, the problem in a short term. Is that the best solution? Probably not long-term, but I think it can get us through, you know, a couple troublesome years if, if needed.
Okay, Mr. Kinder.
I think that's a loaded question, because the way you take care of overcrowding is to build more. And that's what we're trying to do in Eureka with, with Proposition T. Randy's right. You can be creative. And I had to be creative when I was principal in some schools, because they were overcrowded. You know, when I was, when I was at Eureka, and not at Eureka, well, yeah, Eureka, and all, all the schools, they were growing tremendously. And we had to find spaces for those. So, you don't put them in the closet, but you do put them in the cafeteria, you put them in the music room when it's not being utilized. You put it in, the gymnasium must be utilized, and things like that.
Okay, your time is up. Ms. Romberg.
Having taught in hallways, there are, there are alternatives. One is that we can look at the distribution of our students and how we are actually teaching in our curriculum. We can utilize technology so that we can maximize instructions in large and small groups. We can flip some of that instruction so that students are doing some of that work outside of the classroom, using technology, but then have the direct instruction within the framework of the classroom itself.
Okay, Mr. Brombath.
I think the planning, scheduling, proper allocation of the resources and logistics, I think they can help resolve issues.
Okay. Now, here's the second of the 30-second questions, and this is a little bit dangerous, I know. But I've gotten three questions about, okay, you all say you support Proposition T. But they want to know, do you support all of it? Okay? Is there one thing about what that proposition proposes that you would change, and why, or why not, if you don't want to change anything? So, let's start with you, Mr. Miller.
That's easy for me. I, I think the whole plan is great. I've looked at it. I've sat through countless meetings with Dr. Canost on this. The budget is perfect. They've got a really good plan to pay this down. Tim and his guys have done it. I've said this before, they've done a great job with this. I really feel like it's a well-designed plan. It's not going to impact our community in a negative way. I, I think it's just a fantastic plan all around.
Mr. Kinder.
We hired the superintendent to make those type of decisions in regards to the bond issue. We trust the superintendent to make those decisions. And he's shared those things with us, and I completely agree with everything on there. From the standpoint, I've seen the growth in Eureka. I see the need at Gaggy. I see the need at Eureka High School, and the need throughout the district. So, I would not take anything off that bond issue, would not change anything. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Romberg.
Yes, I completely support the bond issue. There isn't anything that I would change in it. I believe that, as Randy has mentioned, it's been well-planned. There is a plan to pay down the bonds for the district. It is something that's needed. Everything on there is legitimate to everyone across the district. I'm 100%, 100% behind it.
Okay, Mr. Brombath.
I was exposed to that during the last BOE meeting, and, and I strongly believe that that's properly planned proposition. It meets the vision and mission of the Rockwood School Districts, and I strongly believe that that should be, you know, pursued.
Finally, Ms. Midyett.
I also support the entire plan. I think it is well-calculated. I think the financial piece was, has been well-laid out, as well as meeting the needs of the district, across the district, in the Eureka areas especially, but also across the district. I would not, you know, at this point in time, I would not change anything.
All right. So, everybody heard this, right? So, everybody has the right answers to tell people if anybody says that some of the candidates have different ideas about the proposition. We are going to move now to final statements, and we're going to start with Mr. Brombath.
The primary reason of my being here and becoming candidate for that is I want to take on what we have done in our 25 years of work at Cultural School to community. And I think my focus is on children's education, and would like to do, I'll be looking at out of the box, different way typically in the industry what people look at it. And I think that could be a significant value to the school district. And, and I've learned myself in personal life, and if I could be of help to the community, that's what I'd like to do. Thanks.
Okay. Next? Yes.
Well, as I said in my opening statement, I've spent a career in education. I've known since I was at Southburn High School, I wanted to be a teacher, and everything I've done has been toward that mission. I believe that I, I have the background, the leadership skills, the educational, to bring to the Rockwood School Board, my experiences, my time, and my talent at this time, to propel Rockwood forward. I believe that Rockwood has a diverse community, but all those communities are honored together, and that if we work together as a board, we can have a strong district that will propel to be number one in the state.
Mr. Kinder.
First, thank the League of Women Voters for sponsoring this tonight. And I really want to thank the five, the four other people up here. Just a lot different than it was three years ago. And I sure do thank you guys for, I think we all think alike, just about everything. For the last 10 years through Maryville, I've had the pleasure to visit many elementary, middle, and high schools, all the way from St. Louis Public Schools to Waynesville, Missouri, to Petosie, Detroit, and everything in between. I always compare these schools to the Rockwood School District when I go and visit these schools. As nice and educationally sound these schools and districts are, there is no comparison to the Rockwood schools. I have been in every Rockwood school, some multiple times. What makes Rockwood stand out are the following, and they're not in any particular order. The facilities, the professional staff, the support staff, the parents, the professionalism of all, the pride in the schools, the curriculum, the professional development, the camaraderie, the willingness to help. Last and most important are the students wanting to learn. I want to help Rockwood stay as the pinnacle of the best public school in Missouri, and a premier district in the nation. Thank you very much.
Mr. Miller.
Well, I'd like to say again that, you know, the past four years volunteering in the, in the schools have been the most rewarding of my life. And to continue to be able to give back in this unique opportunity that I'm in is amazing, and I just want to keep giving back. I'm very passionate about the district. I have a lot of pride with the district. I, I think what we do is amazing, and our children are amazing. Some of the things that I see in a classroom are just, it's, you're like, wow. So, these kids just, they, they blow your mind sometimes. I think that as a district, we can continue to advance our technology. Like I said, I'm huge on that. You probably know that by now. All while keeping our class sizes down. Again, that's another important one to me. So, I feel this can all be accomplished while we all remain fiscally responsible to our community. Thank you.
Finally, Ms. Midyett.
Well, what's, what I believe sets me apart, although I thank my fellow candidates here, because I'm impressed with everyone sitting at the table. Though, I think what maybe sets me a little bit apart from the others is really my true executive leadership I've had through my work with the, with, in St. Louis County, and being able to work with the 20 other, 22 other school districts, and know where, where to go get resources, how to share expertise, and how to collaborate throughout St. Louis County and in the region. But in my heart, I want to address the, I want to share with you the, part of the question about have, about students thriving. And I know Proposition T is all about And I know Proposition T is all about thriving, but it's also about student engagement. I've spent my entire career working for, for students who, it was hard for them to learn. They had to learn differently. They, we had to put in different resources. We had to collaborate as educators, we had to work together. And so I really, that is my passion. And that is what I want for the Rockwood School District. I want every student to be able to thrive. And hopefully we'll have the, we'll have the facilities to make that happen. But we also need to have the, the willpower and the, and the commitment to do that through our, through our staffing process, through our kids, through what, how we engage kids, how we bring in the diversity, how we deal with suspensions, how we deal with special education issues, how we work as parents together, how we work with the community. And so we, our kids have to be able to thrive and go forward and be ready for that next step in their life.
I think we ought to give these candidates a round of applause. I'm almost glad that I'm not a voter in your district because I would have some tough choices to make. But I want to thank all of you for making this a successful event. These were your questions. And thank you to our host, particularly Kathy Orta from the district office. Now, if you found tonight's forum to be useful, think about joining the League of Women Voters. We don't endorse parties and we don't endorse candidates. We spend a lot of time trying to educate folks about issues and candidates. However, we do take very strong positions on issues that we care about. And we have no stronger position than our unequivocal support of public education. You have to start with your backyard and it's very heartening to know, I live in the city, that you're expanding and you have the resources to do it. But also think about what's going on at the state level. So that the League of Women Voters is in Jefferson City all spring, trying to talk to legislators about supporting public education. And we're also concerned about what's going on at the national level. So in the league, you can do things like this. You can work on the Voters Guide, which you see in the Post Dispatch. We do all the content to that with all volunteers, it's quite a task. But we also care passionately about issues. We were downtown at City Hall today, listening to Jay Ashcroft talked about how he was going to implement voter photo ID, something that we feel of strong opposition to. So look for the Voters Guide. It's going to be online on our website and in the Post Dispatch's website around the 17th, St. Patty's Day. And it's going to be printed in 280,000 copies of the Post Dispatch on Friday, March the 24th. You can get on vote411.org and you can download, Mr. Miller, you love technology, you can download your personal ballot, see all your candidates and what we've written about Proposition T, although I'm going to go back and look at it tonight after listening to all of you. And remember that the polls are going to be open on Tuesday, April the 4th, from 6:00 AM to 7:00 PM. If you want to know where your polling place is, and there have been some changes in polling places. Or for those of you who live in St. Louis County, you've got a big proposition on your ballot. Rockwood sort of crosses counties, but there's some very, very important elections where you live. You can, you can call the St. Louis County Board of Elections or you can call the League of Women Voters. We will be there all day when the polls are open. So thank you very much and tell your friends they missed a civil conversation. I learned a lot. Good luck and please tell everyone to vote. Thank you.